The Wheaton City Council Councilman-at-Large. Sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Wheaton, serving the communities of Warrenville, West Chicago, Wheaton, Winfield, and Carroll Stream. My name is Barb Lyman, a member of the League of Women Voters of Wheaton and your moderator for this evening. I live in West Chicago, so I will not be voting for any of the candidates participating in this forum this evening. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports or opposes candidates or parties for office. The League is not affiliated with any political party. The League's purpose is to promote civic responsibility through the informed and active participation of citizens in government and through civil civic discourse. Providing forums is a major mission of the League of Women Voters, so citizens can become better informed about the issues facing their community and to become better acquainted with the candidates running for office. The format tonight is a candidate forum and not a debate. Candidates are expected to accurately represent the facts and their responses reflect their own views and opinions, and we will refrain from commenting on the views of other candidates. The League of Women Voters is not responsible for the accuracy of statements made by the candidates. It is the responsibility of the public, news, media, opposing candidates to fact-check statements made by candidates if necessary. All candidates tonight have signed and returned the ground rules by the deadline established in the invitation. These rules specify the format, time limits, broadcasting of the forum, and other rules related to the conduct of the forum. The candidates will begin in alphabetical order with their one-and-a-half-minute opening statements. Then they will alternate in order in which they answer questions for a maximum of one-and-a-half minutes. After the question portion of the forum, each candidate will give a one-and-a-half-minute closing statement. Members of the League will act as timers, and I will enforce the time limits. Should a candidate exceed the time limit, I will ask them to finish their sentence and move on to the next candidate. We have received a multitude of questions from the community in advance of tonight's forum. To ensure that questions represent a balance of topics, a panel of experienced members of the League of Women Voters has reviewed the questions submitted for appropriateness, applicable to all candidates, and to avoid duplication. We will do our best tonight to read as many questions as possible within the timeframe allotted for tonight's forum. We are grateful to those in the community who have taken time to learn more about the candidates before casting their vote by attending or watching this forum. For those in attendance this evening, we ask that you listen attentively, turn off your cell phones and electronic devices, avoid commenting or disrupting others during the forum, and refrain from applause until the end of each, until the end of the forum. And finally, I want to say how appreciative we are of the candidates who are not only willing to serve in office, but who have agreed to be here tonight to share their ideas and goals. So let us begin. Candidate Bray Parker, your opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So my name is Erica Bray Parker, and I am running for the City Councilman-at-Large position. I really want to thank the League of Women Voters. As a high school civics teacher, I've worked with them for decades, and mostly I have my students out there, and I'm out there with them. So this is quite the experience up here. So, but I appreciate your time tonight. I appreciate that everyone's taking the time to be here. Also, you know, as a high school civics teacher, we talk about, one of my mantras has always been democracy is a verb, and it's important that you get active, and I've always believed it's important that I get active. So four years ago, I decided I needed to practice what I preach, and I ran for city council, and I won. And I was so excited, and then I realized what I was in for, and it was definitely, has been a learning curve. But I've dove into it. I'm an active member of this council for the last four years. My budget book every year is littered with multicolored Post-it notes, and I do my homework, and I make the best decisions that I can on behalf of our community. I'm running again because we're doing a good, solid job, but there's more to be done. I believe I provide a diverse voice on this council with diverse experiences. When I win, I will be one of two women, and I will be the only mom on the council, and I believe that provides an important voice for our community. So, thank you.
Candidate Klausing, your opening statement.
Yeah, so thank you all for coming out, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this tonight. I am totally new to anything political, but I'm a lifelong Wheaton resident, and I love the community. And I'm a graduate of Wheaton-Wareville South High School, and met my wife in high school. We actually went to prom together, senior year of high school, and both went down to the University of Illinois. I studied finance and accounting at University of Illinois. And after college, we got married and decided to move back here to raise our family. Wheaton's such a special community to us. My parents went to Wheaton College. My dad's been, was a dentist in town for over 30 years. He just retired. And, you know, for a career now, I work with three different real estate and mortgage companies. We specialize in selling senior housing assets all over the country. We also have a company that sells affordable housing, Section 8 and Section 42 housing across the country as well. And then we have a finance company that finances these transactions. So I feel why I'm qualified to sit on the council is so much of this is business-minded and analytical, and with my finance and accounting background, I feel like I can be a good resource for the community, and the community's given so much to me here that I'd just like an opportunity to give back.
Thank you. Candidate Huditz.
Thank you. And just being sensitive to time constraints, I prepared my opening comments and closing. So, good evening. My name's Frank Huditz. I've lived in or near Wheaton my entire life. I graduated from St. Francis High School here in Wheaton, received an associate degree from College of DuPage, and bachelor's degree from North Central College in Naperville. I've been married for 52 years to my wife Carolyn. We have two adult children who live in the area. I'm a Vietnam veteran and former CEO of a large multinational direct marketing services company, which I helped grow from five employees to 600 employees and $100 million in sales at our peak. Also, I am proud to say our company was recognized with excellence awards from Merrill Lynch, Pricewaterhouse, and Ernst Young under my leadership. On a personal level, I volunteered my time nearly every year of my adult life to different causes. Most recently, in the last 10 years, included that as the vice chairman and chair of DuPage Foundation. On a civic level, I was appointed as a commissioner to the Wheaton Housing Commission. I was elected as a Milton Township precinct commitment, and just recently I completed the 10-week Wheaton Citizens Police Academy training. Bottom line, I guarantee you, if elected, I will be a hard-working asset for all the citizens of Wheaton. Also, as councilman-at-large, I will be a special voice for seniors, individuals with special needs, and veterans. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The first question, we'll begin with you, candidate Klausing. And the question is this: What in your professional and personal background leads you to believe that you would be an effective city council member?
Yeah. Well, thank you for the question. So I'm a small business owner. I'm a managing partner of our real estate firms and finance company, and we rule that firm by committee. So I'm used to working in groups and making hard decisions about finances. You know, we have a lot of needs in our company, and, you know, you have limited resources, no different than a city. Although I'll say our, our company budget is, is not the 120 million of the, of the city, but I feel like my analytical and finance skills would be a, a good asset. And I've, just generally, I feel like I'm a good decision-maker. I can take a lot of different data from different points of view and look at it and come up with, with a very good and well-informed decision. I'm also a quick learner, so I feel like although I don't have experience on, I don't have any political experience, or I have not been on the council before, I feel like I'm a humble person that will take the time to learn things and absorb information quickly and promise to make good decisions for the city.
Thank you. Candidate Huditz.
Yes, thank you. Now, I feel I'm immensely qualified to serve in the city council, and many from 30 years as CEO of a company that required all aspects of managing a growth organization. And I know from HR issues to purchasing to legal to finance, I've touched every part of that in growing our company, as well as growing the actual infrastructure of the company with plants in Europe and plants in the United States and sales offices. So it's with the ability to multitask and, and, and thank you for that, and really understand the needs and keep all employees motivated, I think I could add value to the city council immediately.
And candidate Bray Parker.
Thank you. So as a professional educator for 29 years, I am definitely highly skilled at looking at issues, multiple issues, serving multiple needs on a daily basis, often five times a day with my five different classes. When I'm not quite sure what the answer should be, I do my homework, I find the experts, and I dig in, and then at the end of the day, I make the best possible decision for the most people impacted. And again, I do that daily for the past 29 years as an educator. From a professional, or I'm sorry, from a personal standpoint, my husband and I have lived here for 26 years now. We've raised both our boys, a 25 and a 22-year-old, through the public schools. We've experienced the public schools, we've experienced scouts, we've experienced church, we've experienced things like volunteering for the People's Resource Center as a family. Lots of community involvement, and we know what this community is about, and I've just only, you know, being on the council for the last four years, have grown to appreciate it more and more every day. So I think those are the experiences that I bring and the value that I will add, continue to add to the council.
Thank you. Candidate Huditz, the next question will begin with you. What are the strengths of the city's five-year strategic plan? What are the weaknesses or gaps in the city's five-year strategic plan?
Well, and I'll be honest, I am not in the details of each part of that question, but I know the mayor's articulated at several meetings, you know, the pillars that he's outlined for the city council, and, and I think for the most part is really focused on finance and stability with the infrastructure and, you know, keeping the, the debt down and services up. I think it's been a well-done job, especially during the pandemic. Fortunately, the $8 million that came in helped that situation as well. Going forward, I think there's going to be challenges in, in every aspect, because we won't have that, that gift of eight million to, to count on. And I think there's, there's a recession looming this year, and on the opposite end of it, though, there's opportunities that if we're aggressive, we can, we can do just fine and keep the city stable.
Thank you. Candidate Bray Parker?
Thank you. Yes, we are most definitely strong financially. We did get the, we did get $8 million in pandemic relief funds that we've spent very wisely, not on human costs, but on some serious infrastructure costs or infrastructure projects. I think environmental sustainability is going to be one of our feature, our main features. We relied, we relied quite a bit on the Environmental Improvement Commission. Commissions operate at, they're very helpful and informative, and we relied quite heavily on their suggestions, their expertise, along with city staff, and made a very solid environmental sustainability plan. And I think that being in the state of Illinois, that's going to be very beneficial where we're headed with some of our electric vehicle infrastructure, with the SEJA Act and other items like that. I think one of the things we might have missed the mark on and not at anyone's, not, not at anyone's discredit, but it's the economic development piece. We've got quite, quite a lot of great things going on in the downtown area, especially with some of the new apartment buildings that are coming in. But when we had to discuss those items, we heard a lot from constituents about the city being more involved and more proactive and more aggressive in economic development. And if that's a conversation we should have as a city, then I am open to having that conversation.
And candidate Klausing, the same question.
Yeah, just, you know, going through that, that strategic plan, you know, financial stability, like Erica mentioned, you know, the, the city has not raised a tax levy in four years, which is near and dear to my heart. I really appreciate that, being a good guard of the, the balance sheet of the city. The enhanced infrastructure, I know there's been a big push on some of the stormwater issues that have, have plagued a lot of the city for a long time, and they've been very, very resourceful with drawing down grants as much as they're able to. Responsive and efficient services, I feel like the city's very well-run. As a resident, I've always been impressed with the services of the city. Community safety, I think we have an excellent police department, excellent fire department, and seeing what's gone on, you know, in Chicago and some of these other areas lately, it's nice to see our police being supported, being in the schools, seeing the police officers eat lunch with the students in the schools and the mayor's newsletter today really made my day. And the environmental sustainability that Erica mentioned, it seems like that's kind of the last piece or the, one of the kind of later action pieces in the plan, so I'd have to study up on that a little bit more.
Thank you. Candidate Bray Parker, the next question will begin with you. Speaking of the 4% years of flat tax, the question is, the city's property tax levy has been flat for the fourth straight year. If elected, would you propose changing that?
So, thank you for that question. That levy question was also brought up in the school board discussion, and the levy is always very an interesting thing. When we, as a levy in the city, we are levying a whole amount across the entire city. So if we're seeing growth within the city and we want to capture some of that growth, we would want to raise some of the levy. I have always believed, and this started out, what, my very first year, the very first vote, it was recommended by the city to slightly raise the levy to capture the growth, and that was going to be applied directly to some library funding. The library's going to open on Sundays, they had done their research, they wanted to open, they had demand from the city, from the residents, to open on Sundays, open later on Fridays. So when there is a program in place that's been well-researched and our community needs it, I am open to raising the levy in order to capture more of the funding. And again, that doesn't necessarily mean, so, so I actually looked at my own personal, our own personal finances, and by not raising the levy, we saved about $5 to $6 on our home property values. So it is something, it's not nothing, and I would not propose that we raise it just to raise it, but there's, it's a smaller amount than most of us think.
Candidate Klausing.
Yeah, you know, unlike the school board, my understanding is that the, you know, the city, the city levy is about 12% of your total tax bill, so it is a lower, lower percentage overall than you're talking about on the school board. I, you know, and as being, coming from a small company, you know, we strive to push value as much as possible. I think the city does a tremendous job, running very lean, as lean as you could. I think if we can, if we can hold the levy there, I think that's fantastic. If, you know, we're in an inflationary environment where salaries are going up, benefits are going up, and the money's got to come from somewhere. So my position would be hold it there as long as you can, and it, with all the economic development going on in Wheaton, you know, there's a lot of companies moving in, there's a lot of companies that have come from the city that are bringing offices out here. There's so much business growth. My hope is that the, the great job the current council's done is in, you know, promoting business and in creating an environment where businesses want to be out here, and people spend money out here. I'm hoping that, that economic lift is enough where we could keep that levy flat for now.
And candidate Huditz.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, first of all, I think it's important to point out that citizens understand that a levy increase isn't necessarily going to translate into a huge tax increase on their, on their personal property tax, but it's scary when they hear the percentages batted around. And I know that city council, when they've discussed it, as Erica's pointing out, it could be miniscule in terms of what the impact might be, you know, to the citizens, but at the same time, it may make very good financial sense for the city to take advantage of captioning some of the, the increase that they could realize that's happened in the city without really any detriment or complaints from citizen. So I think it, it all depends on the situation. I would probably lean towards the advice from the city managers, who I know are very talented. We've got a great team of guys here who understand, you know, what can be tolerated, what our system can, can handle in terms of additional levies. But for the most part, no one likes to see any sort of rate, increase in their taxes. I'm one of them as well, but if it's, if it's a very small amount, I, I think it's, it's not unwise to consider it.
Thank you. The next question will begin with candidate Klausing. And the question is this: What, if any, changes would you recommend to the current process for nominations and appointments to municipal boards and commissions?
Yeah, you know, I have to say, for not being on the council before, I, I can say I'm not super familiar with all the processes with nominating and how these boards are created and that whole process. So, you know, admittedly, I'd probably just have to say I'd have to learn more.
Great. Thank you. Candidate Huditz.
You know, I, that's a very interesting question, because I was recently on the Housing Commission, went through the process of being appointed there as a commissioner, and, and witnessed, yeah, other commissions in terms of individuals who had to wait a long period of time to, to be nominated to those commissions. I, I think the process suddenly changed because we had a meeting with the city manager, and he said that the mayor decided to, instead of continue with the process that Mayor Gresk had and other mayors, I think before him, it was to go forward where instead of sharing all the resumes with the city councilman, that he would make the decision and then bring it to a vote, his decision to the vote at city council. I'd like to see it returned to the way it was before, where the city councilmen had the chance to look at all the resumes and then kind of vote on the individuals who had submitted their resumes, and then give that feedback to the mayor for maybe the top three that they would choose.
Thank you. Candidate Bray Parker?
Yes, thank you for that question, because we just did discuss it about a week ago at one of our meetings. First of all, I just want to say clearly that I value the boards and commissions. I, I see them as the ultimate community voice. So we get emails that we pay attention to, we get phone calls, we get stopped on the street even sometimes. But when you are an active member that applies for a commission, joins a commission, attends a monthly meeting on that commission, you really have a large impact in our community, and you are all in. So I highly value those individuals and what the commissions have to offer for us. The current ordinance does, does specify that the mayor appoints with the council, and the council approves. When I first started on the council four years ago, we, we all had, right away, we had access from the city clerk to the applications. That has altered over the last year or so, where the applications now go directly to the mayor. Once the mayor approves, they go to the rest of the council. So this last time, when I voted on who, when we voted on this application to a certain commission, I had no idea who had, who else had possibly applied and what my other, what our other options were, and I was uncomfortable with that. I would like to see it return to the practice that we all get access and we have some input on it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will begin with you, candidate Huditz. And the question is, how will you ensure marginalized voices are being represented in policy decisions?
Well, you know, the, the quick answer to that is certainly if it's a significant issue that we're all facing, I mean, you, you have to make that open to the citizens. In some cases, let's say, my wife's disabled, for example, and has been for 20 years, and if it's a policy that's going to affect people with disabilities, certainly get in front of those groups that have people in those cases and, and get the input from them, who are the people who are going to be affected the most by it, and don't just operate in a vacuum and act like, you know, the citizens don't need to be consulted, because you're dealing with people, you're dealing with emotions, you're dealing with lives that are marginalized for whatever reason, and I think the smart reason is be very sensitive to that.
Thank you. Candidate Bray Parker, your response?
Thank you. So as an educator, I'm a social studies teacher, so it's, for 29 years, it's become, it's second nature to celebrate diversity, honor diversity, uplift diversity. So that's always just been a part of my profession and my personal beliefs. So when it comes to terms, in terms of getting marginalized voices at the table in the room heard, I have actively sought out diverse voices and spoken with people. Very specifically, the, our Wheaton Public Library provides amazing services, and they have provided quite a few of diverse programs. Some of them include diversity, equity, and inclusion actions, hearings, individual interviews. And I have followed up with some of those individuals and had coffee with those individuals. They're people from our community that I don't know. I don't see, you know, down on the tents on Hale Street on Friday night, I don't see they're not friends with my kids' friends, that kind of stuff. So you really have to make a conscious effort to speak with people and hear what they have to say.
Thank you. Candidate Klausing?
Yeah, I think, you know, both Frank and Erica said, I mean, I think are great, and, you know, I think keeping an open door and encouraging people to come in and share their voice. You know, the, the couple council meetings that I've attended, there's been citizens that have spoken, and, you know, I've been to a number of school board meetings where people come in and speak their mind, and, and people listen, and this is a great forum for, you know, anybody with an opinion that has the ability to come in and speak. So I, you know, as a small business owner, like I've said, I wear a lot of hats at our company. I always respond quickly to emails, I return phone calls quickly, and I like to hear everybody's opinion. So I would say encourage people to come in and make their voice heard is, is one way I think it could help.
Thank you. Candidate Bray Parker, the next question will begin with you. What efforts are you aware of that the city of Wheaton is currently taking in tackling the ongoing stormwater problem? Are those efforts sufficient? If not, what more can specifically be done that the city of Wheaton is not already doing?
So we only get a minute and a half, is that correct?
Yes.
I'll try to make this short. But this is a very serious issue. Four years ago, when I was first elected, we were studying it, and I remember very distinctly, I was out in people's backyards with a city engineer looking at their flooding problems, and, and we were studying it and studying it, and people kept asking, constituents kept asking, when are we going to do something? When are we going to be in action? And it's really been, for me, a great experience that now we are acting. We have some pretty major projects. There's, we have approximately 14 or 16 projects, I'm sorry if I get that number slightly wrong, projects that have been proposed. That could cost us upwards of $40 million if we were to do them in a day, and that's just not feasible. We've, we hired a grant writer over the last two years on the city staff, paid for that position over and over again. We've gotten two grants from the DuPage County, so we've gotten very creative with getting funding. Two grants from DuPage County, we're in the middle of discussing with, two grants from FEMA at the national level. We've also, on a, so that's the big scale. The small scale is we've had, we have some cost-sharing programs for backyard flooding for individual residents, and, and some other, storm sewer and sanitary sewer programs as well, so some cost-sharing programs that are important.
You did it. Candidate Klausing?
Yeah, you know, I have not sat through all the meetings, going through all the details on these flooding programs, but as a resident that had a backyard that used to flood there near and dear to my heart, and it is one of the most frustrating things you can imagine, and water damage is just terrible to deal with. So I'm excited to see the city has taken this so seriously. Obviously, $49 million is a lot of money in $120 million estimate budget for the year. So those things can't happen all in one year unless you went and decided to issue more bonds and go into debt. So I think the creativity and the resourcefulness, going for grants and finding matching money and finding money in other buckets where you can is fantastic. And I had lunch with the city manager today and kind of went through a little bit of this, and I know they're laying out, you know, a strategic plan and going through some studies on which ones are the priority, and trying to lay out a timeline for when these things could economically best occur. So I think the council's doing a great job with that right now, and I'm glad to see they're doing that work.
Candidate Huditz.
Yes. Good question, a constant issue for many, many years, and, and one that's not going to go away with climate change the way it is and more heavy rains predicted. I know there's one problem right now that's actually was stated in the, the annual budget, annual forecast, that's occurring along the streams area subdivision, southwest side of Wheaton, and it's critical there. They, they have flooding issues that actually it's creating a, a problem for people upstream from that, where the city has to go in and dredge the, the lakes there that currently exist to open up so the water can flow down a little bit better beyond the streams area. So there are solutions that the city managers are working on. The bright side of that one, which is annually costing the city, I believe, close to $1 million every five years or four years, they have some grant money that they think are they're going to be able to get that'll cover 80% of their costs. So big issues, not going to go away. I think the city's on top of most of it.
Thank you. The next question, candidate Klausing, is this: In order for Wheaton gas stations to better compete with those in neighboring municipalities, do you favor lowering the gas tax so that Wheaton citizens can stay home and patronize gas stations located in the city of Wheaton?
You know, that's a great question. You know, if you take away tax revenue from somewhere, you're going to have to make it up with, from somewhere else, you know, within that budget, so I guess... So I guess I'd hesitate to, if things have been in place a long time, I think there'd have to, that would have to be looked into to see how much that change in gas tax would affect the city revenue. And then do you, where else do you make that up or where do you make that cut? So I'd have to, I guess, go back and do some research on that.
Candidate Huditz, your thoughts?
My thoughts, it's interesting because just recently when gas was going to like $6 a gallon in some cases, I quickly got out my GasBuddy app and looked at it and surprisingly found a number of gas stations in Wheaton that were competitive, more competitive than a lot of other ones in the area. So I'm not so sure that the gas tax is going to be totally different than a lot of other communities or the gas would be cheaper much anywhere else. But I can understand the question, but I think the city is smart to kind of, you know, keep in line, aligned and hopefully a little bit less than others if possible, but not necessarily raise it dramatically.
Candidate Ray Parker?
Could you repeat the question, please? And is this, was this a generated question from the community?
Uh huh.
Okay.
In order for Wheaton gas stations to better compete with those in neighboring municipalities, do you favor lowering the gas tax so that Wheaton citizens can stay home and patronize gas stations located in the city of Wheaton?
So I'm going to just be honest, this one stumps me a little bit. It's, it's my impression that we don't actually have a city gas tax, that we are funded, we have the, I'm pretty sure that's right. So that's why this has stumped me and I wanted to know if it was from a community member. We do, however, rely on the motor fuel tax and that comes from the state. So that's distributed through, to all communities, the motor fuel tax. And so there's been some discussion about like electric vehicles. If we go too much to electric vehicles, they don't generate any motor fuel tax and we are pretty heavily dependent on the motor fuel tax to fix our roads and bridges. So there's a little bit of a, we're going to have to make a shift there. But it's my understanding that we do not have a very specific city gas tax.
Thank you. The next question, candidate Huditz, is this. What efforts would you support, if any, to address affordable housing in the community?
Boy, you hit the right guy with that question. As I mentioned, I want to be a voice for seniors, people with special needs and like Naperville and other communities are seeing the need for affordable housing and being proactive about creating it. I think Wheaton really needs to look seriously at this. Seniors just announced by Time Magazine this past week, within 10 years, the amount of seniors are going to exceed the amount of children under 17 years old. There's a growing population of seniors and they're all living longer, which is great, but it may be new challenges for cities and municipalities that have to figure out ways to help people in their 80s and 90s that can't move around as quickly. So I'm very much in favor of affordable housing to be considered. I don't think it needs to be happen overnight, but I think we better plan for it to eventually be something that we have to fill within the next four or five years.
Candidate Ray Parker?
Thank you. So in the terms of affordable housing, I was a little disappointed when we shifted, this was part of a larger plan, we shifted the Housing Commission to the Commission on Aging. I think the Commission on Aging, that's a great demographic group, a diverse group to make sure we're, we have equitable practices. But I wanted us to continue to look also at housing. And we do have housing statistics and affordability, housing statistics, but we don't have any structure or plan to that. And we've talked to, and I've encouraged this along Roosevelt Road when we discussed the Roosevelt Road rezoning, possibility to get some affordable housing into that region. I know the new development right on Main Street and Roosevelt Naperville and Roosevelt, we're going to have a, there'll be a daycare facility and there'll be an emergency care facility. And we talked about that, individuals in maybe more affordable housing, maybe lower income housing, assisted income housing, they're going to have more accessibility to some of the things they need, like an emergency care facility so they can walk along Roosevelt. We've talked about sidewalks along Roosevelt. So I think that's part of a larger, who's moving, what, we, we want families to come here and live here and grow here. And we also want people to stay here for their lifetime and be able to age in place here. We need to make sure it's affordable.
Candidate Klausing?
Yeah. So fortunately, I work in both seniors housing industry and the affordable housing industry. You know, in my mind, it kind of breaks into two buckets. You've got kind of rental side of the affordable and the senior housing, and then you've got the owned side. And the owned side's much more simple. And the, I think the easiest way we can keep the owned side affordable, if you've looked at your utility bills, your tax bills, all that in Illinois gets so expensive that a lot of times exceeds someone's mortgage or can be as expensive as their mortgage if they've been in the house for a while. So controlling those sides and what we can do from the, from the city standpoint, I think is very important from the owned side of the housing. On the rental side, there's some, there are great tax credit development programs. Section eight is an old program where basically the federal government then pays the rent. Those really don't exist anymore. It's all gone more to a voucher program where you can take, a resident can take that voucher and go to where they want. So what I would say is what I think the city council could do is as they're planning, as we're planning different areas and different corridors, having areas that would be, have areas of land that would be affordable enough to build that model and encourage developers to come in and look at that land or to consider Wheaton as an area to build some of that section 42 housing, I think could be something we could do. But having the city actually build anything or try to run a healthcare facility or to run a multifamily property, it just gets very challenging.
Thank you. Candidate Ray Parker, do you favor city staff, particularly economic development, to work with commercial landowners and encourage a hotel or inn to be developed in the city of Wheaton? Given that weddings and receptions take place at places like Arrowhead Golf Club and Moment on Main Downtown, yet wedding parties are forced to stay outside the city, resulting in the city missing out on a potential hotel tax revenue?
Yeah, that's an interesting question and we've heard that, you know, I've actually heard that question before. I think in the larger position, like I stated earlier, we don't necess, we don't currently have the staff and the structure to be aggressive or very active in economic development at this point in time. We encourage it through the Downtown Wheaton Association, we have a great working relationship with the Chamber of Commerce, but we, and, you know, we work with zoning, but we don't have a, we don't have a Naperville-sized economic development office. So it gets very difficult. And if the other, you know, the other argument is if we're going to work aggressively towards an inn, well, should we work aggressively towards a theater? Should we work aggressively towards, you know, a larger box, big box store on the north side or south side? It's, I don't always like the phrase slippery slope, but it's kind of a slippery slope of what, how active and what specifically are we going to get active in? And in the end, these are private businesses and the market, the market really leads and we can help in shape with our zoning, but we need to, I think Wheaton prefers that we be more cautious and let the market lead.
Candidate Klausing?
Yeah, you know, being in real estate, you know, developers are always looking for highest and best use for the property. And I, you know, a city council can encourage, like Erica said, through zoning or through, if it warrants a change in zoning or a difference in setback or something to make, make that site be able to get to the density or to the scale that a developer would need to make the project stand on its own merits. I think that's where the council could be helpful. But especially a larger scale hotel developer, they have very tight financial models, they're very sharp demographic studies that they all go through. And so I think, you know, for whatever reason, you know, this downtown corridor in the Wheaton area just has not been a, it has not overlaid with a hotel developer that, that it makes sense for. And I don't know that the council could do much about that.
Candidate Huditz, your thoughts?
Yes, no, I think Brad and Erica make good points. I think Wheaton, you know, certainly, yeah, wants to be, you know, moving at a pace that's not, you know, just galloping, but, you know, at a steady pace. And, but also I think there's the opportunity to grow. I obviously come from a company where I grew tremendously and I'm a growth-oriented guy. There's a way to do it with orderly processes, with strategic planning, where you don't upset the apple cart overnight. You could have it both ways, where people are being comfortable with seeing the growth. But most importantly for all Wheaton citizens is you want financial stability. I mean, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, you know? We don't know if anyone will come knocking at our door with some new idea they want to bring to our table. And if we had a more proactive and aggressive strategic plan in place with an economic development part of the arm of the council or in the city, I think we would be well-served in assuring ourselves and developers that we have our act together. So I vote very heavily, heavily on economic development.
Thank you. Candidate Klausing, what is one idea you have to better the community that no one else is talking about yet?
This community can't get any better. No, I'm just kidding. No, so, you know, one thing I've, this has been a pretty neat experience for me, growing up here, I have not been involved in the local government at all or the leadership as much. But I know so many people that are small business owners that have restaurants in town. So it's been, for me, these last couple of months, it's been a little bit of a listening tour and just meeting with people, lots of coffees, lots of lunches. I've really enjoyed that. I think, I don't know that I have an answer for it, but one thing I've heard over and over again from the small businesses, small business owners is just how onerous it is for them to get their arms around, what could I do with this property? What would be the maximum I could develop it to? What does this time look like? And the time and resources it takes to get something from, let's say, a vacant building downtown Wheaton to getting a restaurant or a bar or something opened? And to the extent there's any way to streamline that process, I think it could encourage additional small business investment. I mean, look at Hale Street now, how vibrant it is down there, and there are very few big brands on that street or even in the downtown corridor. You know, the, the local restaurant, local bar, local coffee shop is so much at a disadvantage from the standpoint of getting something from that dream to an actual open business because they just don't have the attorneys and the development staff and the construction crew and everything readily available. So that would be, I don't know exactly how that looks, but trying to create that process.
Well, good start. Candidate Huditz?
Yes, thank you. So this is very much on my mind lately. I've thought of this, discussed it with several people. There is a common denominator, I think of all people, citizens living in Wheaton, of what they like about Wheaton, and it's safe. And it is a very safe place. And I learned that even confirmed it when I went through the Wheaton Citizen Police Academy. Came away from that with a great feeling about our police force and how well they're trained and how much they are looking out for every citizen. Just recently, they announced a program that they're going to help owners of certain cars have a way of protecting people from stealing with this device that'll lock in the steering wheel. But I've come up with the thought that why not, and maybe this can happen throughout all the homeowners in Wheaton, but initially maybe for seniors, of having a subsidy of video doorbells where every senior and every citizen that's, has special needs can have a video doorbell, not only for them to view what's going on outside their house, but their loved ones can tap into those video doorbells and their caregivers can see what's going on as well if they need to alert that, that senior. But I think it's a very doable thing. The cost of those has come down and I would hope, if elected, that I could bring that to the council's attention and get some action on it.
Thank you. Candidate Erica Ray Parker?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, one idea, and again, it's a pretty, it's a narrow idea because it's something no one's, you know, no one's talking about. But I really focus, being a high school teacher, I focus on the youth in our community. I remember a couple of summer ago, summers ago, if, you know, in case we haven't forgotten, we had protests, several protests in downtown Wheaton, in Adams Park, and this was led by young people. They want to be part of our community. So I think the more we can do to encourage programs from small to large, the, you know, the streetscape, making sure that they're feeling accessible. Now, they're supposed, they need to walk their wheels, but they, it should be accessible to them. We talked about Adams Park, we started out with a 10:00 PM sort of shutdown and I encouraged 11:00 PM, the high school kids are staying out a little bit later, you know, where, what kind of places do they have to go? So it's a little bit more of young people and coordinating with the, we've got two high schools, two public high schools, we have other important parochial schools in our area as well to coordinate with them on some programming. Maybe it's collaborating with the Environmental Improvement Commission. So some programs for our young people that we, we want them to enjoy being here and we want them to stay here and come back after college, like Brad did.
Well, excuse me, that was our last question. And so I regret that there's not enough time to ask all the questions that were submitted, but I'm sure you candidates will be, make yourselves available for specific questions that we didn't get the opportunity to ask. So now it's time for closing statements. And we'll begin with candidate Huditz.
Thank you. Again, I prepared this, actually, I thought I only had a minute, so I really didn't need to do this, but I'll read it anyhow. So first of all, a big thank you to the Wheaton League of Women Voters for organizing this event, and thank you to all of you who have showed up here this evening and to those who eventually are going to watch us. Apparently, you're going to be taping that and making it available. As I've said at other events like this, the city of Wheaton is an excellent, is in excellent financial shape and has accomplished a lot over the last 10 years. However, as everyone knows, we can't rest on our laurels. But what we can do is be a little more proactive about preserving the stability the city enjoys right now. Specifically, I feel we need to develop a strong economic development plan which might identify what sort of businesses and developments we most want to attract and where they should be. In that process, I feel we should strongly consider affordable housing for seniors and special need young, young adults, as well as environmental concerns, infrastructure needs, and the right amount of police and fire protection. Bottom line, I feel planned, orderly growth is better than sitting around and waiting for growth opportunities to come to us. Let's be growth-minded, let's be smart, let's get the word out, we have our act together. My name's Frank Huditz, my website is bankonfrank.org. Please vote for me on April 4th.
Thank you so much. Candidate Ray Parker, your closing statement.
And yes, I would like to echo the thank you to all the League of Women Voters. There's a lot of work that goes into this. Thank you to all of you that are still here on a Thursday evening. I also want to remind everyone, you know, this position, the at-large position, represents the whole city. It is a nonpartisan position. The overwhelming majority of the work we do up here is in fact nonpartisan. We want to keep it that way. That's important. I believe I've got the experience, the last four years, I've asked the tough questions, I do my homework, I actively seek out diverse voices, and then I make the best choices that are going to benefit Wheaton, and I want to continue to do that. We have some work to do, we have some issues ahead of us, we have some management turnover that's going to be important to have good interview, good decision-making, good focus. I'm the first on the ballot and you can check out my website, ericaforwheaton, number four, ericaforwheaton.com. Please reach out with any questions you might have, I'll stick around for a while for sure. You can find my email and address on there. You can find more ideas that I have, more opinions, some of my endorsements of some great leaders throughout our community. And just make sure that you get out and vote either on or before April 4th. And you can vote early at the county fairgrounds right now. Well, not right now, but.
In the morning.
Yeah, in the morning. So thank you.
Candidate Klausing, your closing statement?
Yes, thank you, thank you all for coming out tonight and for the opportunity to be up in front of you. It's, it's just really cool for me to be up here, growing up in this town and then sitting up here talking to all of you and you guys are all listening to me, it's amazing. But, you know, I, I'm just really encouraged by the city and where the current leadership is taking things. When you see the overall state of the economy in Illinois, where we're having net migration, we're losing tax revenue, we're losing dollars, we're losing people. The city of Wheaton is, the tax base is growing, businesses are investing here, and I think it's a testament of the, the good stewards that the leadership has been here of the town. I have four kids at home, my son's at Wheaton Warrenville South High School, I have a daughter at Hubble, and I've got two daughters at Wheaton Christian. So people are wondering why in the world I'm running for this right now with everything going on at home. But I think it's a great example to the kids to show that, you know, we give back to the community, want to spend time and invest in the community. And I feel like with all the different circles that I run in, I'm in a unique position where I have kids on so many different teams, involved in different plays at different schools. I get to touch so many of the different citizens of the community, I feel like I can be a very good liaison. Again, it's Brad Klausing. Again, it's Brad Klausing. Website's klausingforwheaton.com and I'm number three on the ballot.
Thank you so much. Please join me in thanking the candidates. Our democracy thrives when all of us are engaged. Attending or watching a candidate forum is an excellent way to be empowered to join discussions on local issues and make your voice heard on Election Day. We hope each and every one of you will vote and inspire your family and friends to do the same on April 4th. Information on how to vote can be found on 411.org and the Wheaton League of Women Voters' website. As Erica said, early voting is begun at the county fairgrounds and you, that's early, early voting. Early voting will begin next week and you can check the Election Commission website for those locations. So thank you for joining us. Good night.
Good night.
Yeah, thank you.